Citizens to be heard, but there are, obviously, you can speak on the budget. Okay? So when you come up and speak at the microphone, please, you know, stay to the subject of the budget. And then your citizens to be heard can be heard next, what is it?
Next week, Tuesday.
Tuesday, in the regular meeting. But this tonight is to talk about the tax rate and also your opinions and thoughts. That's new. On the budget. So with that said, like I said, we'll make another pass back there, but right now we have three people signed up to speak. That's Patty, Thomas, and Stephen so far. If anybody else would like to speak, please sign up back there and we'll make another round to make sure that everybody gets heard. So with that said, it is now 7:02, and I will call, I will call the City of Castle Hills' regular city council meeting to order and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present. This meeting is being held based on the public hearing on the proposed fiscal 2018 budget and the proposed 2017 tax rate. So I want to remind everybody that we are on YouTube, excuse me, Ustream, recording live, streaming live, anything. The microphones are live, so anything that's said could be heard with who's ever listening to them on the internet. So with that said, how many people we have onboard?
We have eighty-four, Mayor.
How many?
Eighty-four.
We have eighty-four. We have eighty-four watching this evening. That's a record. So congratulations whoever had that idea to put that on. Thanks. Okay. With that said, item one on the agenda is conduct a second of two required public meetings on the proposed fiscal year 2018 and the proposal of 2017 tax rate of .011314 per 100 of taxable evaluation. The proposed 17 tax rate will raise more than approximately $212,999, a 6.2% increase, and the amount of $34,730 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year. The City of Castle Hills' rate for 2016 was .501345. This year, the City of Castle Hills' proposed tax rate for 2017 is .501345, which is a wash. There is no increase in taxes this year. It is now 7:04, and I'm going to open up this public hearing. Did you want to go ahead and move forward with the additional? Okay. The initial?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Council, citizens, it's good to be here this evening. We'll try to rush through this as quickly as we can. First, I'm going to apologize, I put 2018 tax rate. That's a rookie mistake. Mr. Brennan's reminded me it should be the 2017 tax rate for the 2018 budget. So you're, please excuse me, just pretend all those 2018s are 2017s. As the Mayor mentioned, the current tax rate is listed at the top, .501345 per $100 valuation. The effective tax rate is the rate that would basically be required to produce the same number, same amount of property taxes as were raised last year. That is .477057 cents per $100 valuation. The 2018 rollback tax rate from Bear County, which is the maximum tax rate we could raise to is, but this would require a vote with 60% passing by the population, is .515221 per $100 valuation. The 2017 certified property tax value, you can see there, is $683,455,192. This excludes, if anybody was wondering, the over-65 exemption that was passed in the May election. So that's about $95,000 in exemptions that are deducted from that value. So that, or excuse me, I should say, that value reflects those deductions. So as the Mayor pointed out, we are not proposing on changing the tax rate for the 2018 budget. It would stay at the same that it's been for the past eight years in the City of Castle Hills. And so when you calculate that out, based on that value multiplied by the certified property tax value, total property tax for the City of Castle Hills is $3,426,000 and, or $426,468. So that's pretty much the tax rate. And that is what the budget was, was based on, was utilizing that tax rate. I just want to run real quickly through some budget slides, and these are the assumptions that were made going into the budget. Overall tax rate would remain the same. Quality of service will remain at existing levels with some increases, some improvements in areas. Expenses are not going to exceed the revenues, so it'll be a balanced budget. In fact, the budget we're recommending has about $100,000 surplus to it. We base this budget on a 2% COLA, which is a little different than the previous years with a 3% COLA. And we've also, based on, we've had three different budget workshops, for those that are not aware. We had three different budget workshops, and there was a lot of discussion about TMRS, the Texas Municipal Retired System, and changing to a two-to-one matching funds at 6% employee contribution. So we'll give you some analysis of that later. I'll explain that more in depth. We go into the budget realizing we need to efficiently use and protect these fiscal resources. They're very near and dear to the citizens and to our city staff as well. The city will always maintain a six-month reserve in the general fund, and any unassigned fund balances would be used for emergencies, one-time expenditures and investment and either capital expenditures, or eventually we want to get to where we have an asset management account, so we know when it's time to replace air conditioners, heaters, carpets, things like that. So for the overview for the budget, again, we've had three public workshops. The general fund revenues increased this year by 6.89%. We, that is predicting a 10% raise in local sales taxes and state shared revenues and as well as a 6.22% increase in property taxes we discussed earlier. Also, we have two new positions that are revenue generating positions that we'll discuss later, for impound management and passport acceptance. But we did not include those as revenues into the budget, insofar as we just included the amount that would cover the expenses for operating those activity lines. There are some capital improvements that would have to be made, and in order to do those, we'd replenish, in order to do those, we would utilize the seed account, and we would use proceeds from these two revenue generating positions to completely pay back the seed account before we move forward. I'd also point out in the next line that the operating expenses are expected to increase 5.83%, so revenue is expected to increase almost 7%, operating expenses almost 6%. Budget remains balanced, a surplus of $100,344 based on those factors I mentioned earlier. This is an income summary. I'm sorry for the folks that can't read this. And all this will be posted, by the way, for the folks that are here that want to look at it. If you'll go to our website tomorrow, we'll have the slides posted, so you can look at them. This is an income summary, just to show where are, where your incomes are for the city. This is the same breakdown, it's just done in a tabular format versus in a slide format. But you can see always the biggest revenue generator is going to be the property tax at about 46% of the budget, then sales tax at 15%, and court income and court tax, believe it or not, is next at 14%. And then it goes kind of down from there. Again, the, these are the incomes, this is the income summary for the, for the budget. You'll notice the total down here is 7.5 million. Last budget, the, this includes also the 2017 budget, there was roughly a little over $7 million. So there's an increase of about $500,000 anticipated in income. Same thing with expense. This is a pie chart, and it didn't print out my labels, but when you look here, this is again the same information presented in tabular format. The overall expenses, $7.4 million. That was $7 million last year. So again, it's about $100,000 surplus over the $7.5 million expected. And there's a rough breakdown of it. Administration at 14%, municipal court 11%, police department at 33%, fire department at 24%, streets at 10%, sanitation 6%. There's been some, some discussion about our unfunded liabilities, comp time, that's only at 0% is what we're anticipating. So it doesn't really even, even though it's a big topic of discussion, it doesn't even round up to a full percent. And then finally, capital expenses of 2%. That doesn't include the street and drainage, so I guess I should point out we have a number of special funds. This is just the general fund, so it doesn't include supplemental streets and drainage, the streets account, the drainage account, the child safety fund, the court security fund, all those different funds. Those are, are separate and distinct from this. There were a number of staff initiatives, and I know these have been, have been the source of a number of discussions out throughout the community, so I wanted to just touch upon these. We have three positions that are salary that we are proposing with the budget to convert to hourly employees. That takes them into a status where they can work more than 40 hours a week without charging comp time or overtime. So that is our police captain position. If you can believe it or not, that is not a salaried position at present, our senior court clerk and our code compliance officer. They all meet the requirements from the FLSA for being in exempt positions. In addition to that, we're proposing to convert one police sergeant position to a lieutenant position. This creates additional rank structure inside the department, increases command and control capability within the department, which is particularly important in the case of an emergency or a crisis. And also, it kind of, it puts us on par with other small San Antonio area cities. We don't have an assistant chief. We have one captain position, and then we've got five sergeants. This would take one of the sergeant positions and convert it to a lieutenant position. And then finally, we've lost our finance officer recently, and this changed, this actually moved the finance assistant position from a 30-hour part-time position to a 40-hour position. These are the two new revenue generating positions. I know there's been a lot of discussion about how many new positions we're proposing. There's actually three. Two of them are revenue generating positions, so they come really at no expense to the city because they're expected to bring in more money than they cost in salary. One of those, and I know this has been a hot topic, I received a, I received a petition signed today by 134 residents opposed to the impound lot. The, we anticipate the overall profits from this being at least $60,000 a year, and that's a very conservative estimate. We visited the city of Balcony Heights and looked at theirs today, which is in a residential neighborhood. We also went to the city of Leon Valley and looked at theirs and spoke with their police chief and their impound lot manager. And that lot, they anticipated the same thing, $60,000. It's in its third month of operation, and this month they're expecting it to make about $18,000, $19,000 this month alone. So they're on a glide path to, to make $150,000, $200,000 this year on their lot, roughly the same amount, maybe a little bit more traffic than we would anticipate in our lot, one to two cars a day. So, so that, that, that is something that also gives us some operating efficiencies for our police force. And right now, I just want to make sure everybody understands, this $60,000 is above and beyond the $35,000 salary. So this is after you pay for the salary. It's after you pay for operating expenses. We anticipate very conservatively estimating it will bring at least $60,000 to the city. We are paying this money and more right now to, to have vehicles impounded via contract. So it's costing us this, costing us this money, and we could turn that into a revenue generator. Same second position we're talking about is a passport acceptance clerk. There are not many locations in the city of San Antonio. If you tuned into a council meeting, a couple council meetings back, there are not many passport acceptance locations here in the city, and when you get there, you might wait as long as two hours. This would be a convenience for our residents, as well as we would be able to draw in some outside revenues. We're talking about starting this as a part-time position at $15 an hour and then expanding it as the, the demand grows. And additionally, we anticipate after the salary's been paid that it would clear a $25,000 profit for this activity as well. And this is, again, these, these are, these are two of those areas where we would watch them, and we have no obligation to continue them. If they are not revenue generators, then we would shut them down. The, what I did want to say as well is we intend to fund, we have no physical space for an impound lot manager or passport acceptance clerk right now. We would actually house those in this structure here and do some facility renovations to accommodate them, and we would fund that out of the seed account. Any revenues above and beyond what it would cost for operating expenses, salary, so on and so forth, would go back to replenish that seed account, so that we still have that money that's available to the city in the future. And then this is, this is the third position, which is an assistant public works director slash project manager. This additionally is money that the city is spending. We've spent $91,000 for project management fees this year alone in 2017, $91,000 alone for project management, and we're not through the year, not through the end of the fiscal year yet. So you can see, this is, this would very easily be paid for. This is when we call a consultant out to do project management, inspection, so on and so forth. And this is part-time help. This is not full-time help. The proposal is, at the same time, we've got another need in that we have a greatest, we have a great public works director. Rick does a fantastic job. I get a lot of rave reviews now. To be fair, there are some people that criticize, but I think we both get that, right, Rick? But, but I will say this, nobody realizes how hard Rick Herata runs until they watch him run. When I first got here, Rick was in the hospital, had just undergone surgery, and I asked, okay, who's running public works in Rick's absence? And they said, Rick is. So Rick was actually running public works from his hospital bed and his cell phone and directing the work activities of his, of his folks down there. So to me, that's not acceptable. It shows Rick's dedication. But additionally, Rick's been here for 14 years as your public works director, and, and he kind of knows, no, I'll, I won't say he knows where all the bodies are buried, but you know what I'm talking about. He knows how the city runs and what needs to be accomplished to run the city, and he doesn't have an understudy right now. And if something were just, God forbid, to happen to Rick tomorrow, he would leave a huge gaping hole in the city of Castle Hills. So I think we can scratch two itches here and take care of two needs for the city, and at the same time, we would be saving this revenue stream going out. Maybe not completely, but, but it would certainly reduce that amount that we're paying to consultants by and large. There was an alternate proposal to create an assistant public works director position and an assistant city manager, manager that would serve as the project manager. But I don't think we're there yet personally, so I did not include that in the budget. There may be more discussion on that when we, council meets on the budget next week. If we did this, we could afford it, but it would basically drive that surplus down to zero in the budget, and I don't want, I don't feel like that would be the right thing to do. In addition, there are a few salary adjustments I wanted to, I wanted to bring forward. One of them is a salary adjustment for our public works director. Rick, can I ask you to step out for a sec? I'd hate to put you through this and listen to this while, while you're in here, but if you'll just, you can step in the hallway over there. I'll grab you and pull you back. No, if you'll step, step outside. I don't want you to be here. I just, I don't want you to hear me say nice things about you. But just, if you look at our public works director, he is paid about $9,000 less than the average in the local area. He had a pay raise in 2000, a small pay raise in 2015, and he's still paid $9,000 less than the average for the local area. And I'll show you a chart in a minute and highlight that for you. That's despite having many more years in service as our public works director than others. There's been some criticism leveled here that Rick is not an engineer, and I will say, I went and called the cities and asked them whether their public works directors were engineers. For the people that were just above Rick on the list, and out of the seven immediately above him, only two of them were engineers. So I know he receives that, we, I've heard that criticism in the past. This is where Rick falls on the list, right here, $70,000 salary. This is the average. I've drawn a line at the average right here. You can see the engineers on the side. If we were to do this, if this council approves this, it just literally moves him up one slot on the list. I will also point out the number of years of the folks above him, nine, two, seven, three. And when you get to Rick, he's at 14 years. So again, I feel like this is, this is warranted. I think it's fair. I could do the same thing with a, a number of the other positions, but to me, this is the most egregious one that we have with salary adjustments. So, and then there was, when we convert the positions from exempt to non-exempt, they're operating at relatively low income levels now because there is a comp time, there's an expectation, there's going to be some comp time, and when they lose that, it would cost them what would be the equivalent of salary. So not to completely match that, but I went and looked and did some salary adjustments or informed by some survey data to establish that market rate. So, so that's kind of the discussion. Rick, you can come back now if you can hear me. You can't hear me. So that's the discussion on the public works director and the exempt positions. This has been a hot topic, and I just wanted to put the bottom line up front. The proposed budget results in a .6% increase, .6% increase in anticipated city costs for combined salary and TMRS expenses. I calculated this, I went back and calculated this number because I was shocked at the number that I saw flashed around the city. Let me explain how this works. As we decrease the COLA, and, but we increase the TMRS, they, they offset each other. So to the actual TMRS expenses, there is an 11% increase, but that dollar figure is smaller than the overall salary expense. And a 1% decrease to salary expense, combined with an 11% increase to TMRS expenses, results in an additional cost to the city of $26,000, which is that .6% that I'm referencing up there for salary, combined salary and TMRS. It also saves an additional $1,645 in FICA and Medicare, et cetera. So the actual net to the budget is a little less than $25,000 for the city. That roughly equates to 18 cents an hour per paycheck for your employees. So I started with the bottom line up front. Let me tell you what the problem is. We have a somewhat difficult time recruiting and retaining highly qualified staff in some of our key positions, and that's potentially due to these unfavorable TMRS comparisons. Let me explain. 92%, 92% of people that are in TMRS, city employees in TMRS, receive a two-to-one match from their cities. 551 of 864 Texas cities match two-to-one. That's only 64% of the cities, but as you can see, the larger cities sway this number up. More close to home, only four Bear County cities are at 1.5 to one in the TMRS system. That is Castle Hills, Hollywood Park, Elmandorf and Somerset, if you count Elmandorf and Somerset as being, they're in Bear County, but they're really not contiguous to the city of San Antonio so much. The remaining 74 cities in Bear County are at two-to-one. So this has become the number one issue when I talk to staff, what is the one thing that, you know, we, we should be looking at doing to help recruit and retain highly qualified staff? This is the one. This going to 6% will require council approval, but it also records, requires a two-thirds recorded vote of employees to change from 7% to 6%. So it's a reduction in the overall percentage that the employee contributes, so they would have to, they would have to vote on that to go from 7% to 6%. They don't have to vote on the two-to-one. That's, that's up to council. The, and I guess I've got an analysis here of what that means. When you are at 1.5 to one at a 7% employee contribution, that's a 17 and 1/2% total investment, right? When you are at a two-to-one at a 6% employee contribution, that's 18%. So it, it roughly equates to a half a percent difference in their, in their benefit package for each employee, but they also get an additional percent of their paycheck in their pocket at the end of the month. So I, I just want to say that, you know, if there's one thing that the city council would consider and the, and the residents would consider, I get a lot of people that tell me that they are thankful for their city staff. This, this is the way that you recognize that, above and beyond anything else. And I know, I, it's not all about money, but this makes a difference. Some of these employees, many city employees, the only retirement they will receive will be TMRS. Goodness knows if Social Security's going to be around when some of these folks retire. By the way, contrary to popular belief in what was published this week, I am not receiving Social Security. I got another nine years to go. So just, just in case you're wondering. But I am receiving a military retirement for 27 years of service. Nobody complained when I was doing it. So, okay. Next meeting on this will be the budget approval meeting at city council, same time as the city council meeting. It's a full agenda for next week, so bring a ham sandwich along. It's going to be at 6:30 PM, right here, same bat channel. And I want to finish with this quote by Teddy Roosevelt that says, "Far and away, the best prize that life has to offer is a chance to work hard at work worth doing." And I believe your Castle Hills city staff believes that the work they're doing here is worth doing. And I, I see it day in and day out, the dedication of your employees, and it makes me extremely proud. Okay.
Thank you, Kurt.
So if you have any questions, Mayor?
Not for you at this time. What I did want to point out, and before I get lynched, I want to kind of express something that I think was a slip of your tongue. It was about a petition that was signed by 100 people in order to deny a impound lot over on Persimmon. And there is indeed a petition for that, but it's not, I want to make sure the two are separated. I don't see a single signature up here that says that they're not in favor of an impound lot. Now, that doesn't mean that you have to go out and get another petition that, that says split hairs and say, I'm not in favor of an impound lot. But I see many people on this list who are in favor of an impound lot, but not in the current place it is. That's loud and clear, okay? So if you, if you're decided that you just totally don't want an impound lot, please get with us at City Hall. I believe now everyone has our telephone numbers. In case you don't, it's 210-535-9094. And you, 84 people out there in TV land could also call if you would like and express your, my mailbox holds 100 entries, so I'll be checking it every day to see if there is someone out there who does not want an impound lot totally somewhere else. I just want to make sure that the two are not mixed together. We hear you loud and clear on the Persimmon issue, situation. Okay. With that said, oh, there it is. That's really all, all I had to say. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give some, some comments later, but I guess what I would like to start off with is we have five people signed up to speak tonight, would like to, let's, since there is so few many people, let's keep it to five minutes, please. On, normally we do three, but we don't have, we don't have that many. Counsel, did you, did you have any comments before we had the citizens speak? We will come around again after the citizens speak.
I'll wait till after the citizens, Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to hear the citizens first, please.
Great.
I'll reserve my comments until after the citizens speak. Sorry for the froggy voice.
Great. Mr. Paul? Did you have any comments before the citizens speak? Thank you. Douglas? Did you have any comments before the citizens speak? We will come around again. Thank you very much. Okay, let's start off with the first one on the list, which is Patty McCord. Okay, let's start off with the first one on the list, which is Patty McCord.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A budget is not a piece of paper with random numbers on it. It's very well-planned, thought out, it's merely a tool, a roadmap, if you want to call it that, to guide you down the path for the entire year. If you know the demographics of this community, it's very easy to know what they're most interested in, and that's safety. Their home is safe, their children are safe, they are safe. And there's nothing quite as ominous as looking out your front door and seeing floodwaters approaching your house or getting in your house. That's catastrophic. You know, we dodged the bullet with Hurricane Harvey. If that hurricane had slipped to the west 30 to 60 miles, we wouldn't be talking about that now because we'd be underwater. We'd be in a lot of trouble, just like Houston. The main thing to remember about this, all our projects should be well-thought-out and prioritized. What makes the citizens happy? They would be happy to know that they don't have to worry about floodwaters, that they're safe, and their families are safe, and their home is safe. But I'm going to leave one question for you to ponder. Does it take a death from a flood to get something done? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patty. Okay. Next up is Thomas Fintris.
Thomas Fintris, 211 South Winston Lane. Couple of comments, you actually hit it on the head about Persimmon. I think it's a wonderful idea, the impound lot. It wasn't even stressed that the $60,000 conservatively proposed was saving us 60 at the same time, so it's basically making 120,000. Fantastic idea, couldn't be more in support of it. Terrible location on Persimmon. The reason being, and that's why, one of the two reasons I'm up here, the reason being, as a city that wants to attract younger people, we have no playground. If you tour the area with strangers who've never seen the area, and they ask you questions about the area, and they have young children or children on the way, you will immediately realize that you're not very child-friendly when it comes to playgrounds, and one on the school doesn't really cut it with people mentally. That location, I understand, wanted to keep the commons free for events and things like that. An adjacent lot like that would be fantastic and centrally located in the city for a playground. I heard somebody mention a surplus earlier, and an investment in that, of that sort would actually pay back over time in people moving to the city that wouldn't ordinarily have chosen the city, make us more salable. So, for that reason, and I don't have a better suggestion of a location, I think Douglas mentioned a place, and I haven't, I'm not familiar with it, but that, I think, would be very important. Jumping to the passport idea, another good idea, especially if you can incorporate that person to help keep offices open. Having recently tried to get animal tags and come over at lunchtime and after 3 o'clock, I had two wasted trips. I got sort of the feeling of what somebody that had a regular-hour job might feel if they tried to do business with the city. Boy, if we had another employee here that wasn't constantly full-time, working on passports, but maybe could fill in from 3 to 5 or during lunch hour, where Janet could have some time off and still have the office open, that would make us look a lot more professional as a city. Even better if, and I don't know if we have a notary service here now, but that might be a really nice addition to that capability for that position. I did hear some resistance in the last meeting about these jobs, about sundowner proposals, about setting up a year or two sundown clause, not because they're bad ideas, but some of you won't be here in two years, and cities, as you know, don't like to shrink. So, it's going to be very difficult to get rid of these, whether they're not, whether they're making money, especially if they're not making money in a couple, few years, if you don't have something automatic set up to make them think about that, whoever those people are in the future. And that's not a distrust of the ideas or the people that are here, it's the people we haven't met yet that are going to be inactive in the future. So, please consider including that in those positions and maybe making those positions fleshouts where we can keep the offices open and leave us a space to put a playground, because if we lose that, I don't, I do not know of a better location for something like that, surplus. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas, I appreciate it. I want to say something here real quick. I sent out an email, just, I mean, excuse me, a text, a second ago, whether or not everybody could hear us out there in TV land. Please, please quit texting back, okay? My phone's full. So, I know you're out there, and thank you very much, all 68 of you. Next is Stephen Ackley.
Stephen Ackley, 118 West Castle Lane. First question I have is a clarification that I'd like to get. Mr. Van Wool had that $95,000 on that first sheet, one of the early sheets there of the over-65 property tax exemption. Is that actually revenue, or is that valuation?
That's valuation, so that is what they, they listed them separately in the report from the appraisal district, and it showed new exemptions over $65,98,000. So it was listed separately.
Okay. I just was confused because it was right after the $683 million in valuation. Let's see, oh, the second question I have was on the passport acceptance clerk. Is there any special qualifications that this person has to have, like a notary or anything like that? Because I imagine if you're examining passport applications, you have to do things like verify, you know, the birth certificates or the proof of citizenship.
Kirk, can I speak to that? So, to be able to accept passports, you have to be able to pass a background check, so you'll have an FBI file, so you have to be an honest, not a criminal of any sort. It's got some other requirements. Let me look at this for you, Mr. Ackley. Bear with me a second. Okay, so to be able to be an agent, you have to be a U.S. citizen, you have to be 18 years old, you have to be a permanent, full-time or part-time employee of the facility, so that would be the city. You have to be able, you have to be, I am, okay, then it's, I'm unable to issue, print, create records, or amend birth certificates or identity documents. So, like downtown San Antonio, they have to have separate places because they issue birth certificates. We don't do driver's license or birth certificates, so this wouldn't be a problem for us. And they cannot be under indictment, parole, or probation related to any federal, state, or local felony or misdemeanor related to breach of trust or moral turpitude, including drug offenses, embezzlement, document fraud, or dishonesty, carrying out a responsibility involving public trust.
That's sort of standard stuff for a government employee.
Yes, and then free of any federal, state, or local felony convictions or misdemeanor convictions related to trust. And then, that's it, that's what they have to answer to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ackley. Okay. Next on the list is Margot Peña.
My name is Margot Peña, and I live at 206 Cremaria. With all due respect to the city council, I would like to know why the citizens of Castle Hills have got to constantly be worrying about what you all are doing. Besides the top leaders of our police department, neither of whom live in Castle Hills, who on this council can truthfully say that you wouldn't mind having a car impound lot across the street from your home or in your backyard? What in the world are y'all thinking? Persimmon is a residential street, just like Prins, Villa Anne, South Garden View, Briar Cliff, Shalimar, or Sunflower. You might say, "Well, there's an empty lot on Persimmon." But there's also an empty lot on Shalimar, so why don't we propose it on Shalimar? Why would we want the unwanted traffic at all hours of the day and night, such as tow trucks, towing vehicles belonging to people driving under the influence, or people who have been apprehended in Castle Hills for committing a crime, or simply just cars that have broken down and abandoned for whatever reason in Castle Hills? I think that as a member of our city council, you all owe it to us to think every time you're going to make a decision that will impact the people of our city. We voted for you, and we expect you to always keep our best interests in mind. You should always ask yourselves before voting, would I want this in my neighborhood? Would I want this across the street from me, from my parents, my children, or my grandchildren? I think that if you would ask yourselves this question before voting for the different issues that arise, the people of Castle Hills could begin to feel that you are truly representing what we want, not what you want. Personally, I have come to know and respect Mr. Douglas Gregory because in the past, when an important issue is coming up for a vote, he has taken the time and trouble to walk around the neighborhood being impacted, to explain the situation at hand, and ask his constituents what their thoughts and feelings are about that particular issue. Why doesn't anyone else on this council care or even ask what we think before proposing and voting for something? Why are we always having to live with this feeling of it's us against them? You are up there because people cared enough and took the time to vote for you to represent us. We would like for you all to try and respect that. Now on another subject. All of the proposed budget additions are focused on additional benefits to city employees with no benefit to taxpayers and homeowners in Castle Hills. For example, the proposed Assistant Public Works Director/Project Manager, which I do not believe we've ever had in place before, and has now morphed into two positions, one to report to the Director and one to report to the City Manager. The justification offered is that this provides an individual who can be trained to take over from Rick Harada at such time as he decides to resign or retire. That could be years from now. While Councilman Paul pointed out that this will take some of the load off of Mr. Harada, the City Manager is also recommending a $7,000 to $8,000 pay raise. Logically, when workload is transferred, there should be a corresponding pay decrease. This Public Works Director's salary is currently 700 higher than the same position in the city of Selma, which is considerably larger in size and in budget than Castle Hills is. When we have the right person in a position, we should certainly aim to be competitive with other like cities in Bear County. In order to do that, we have to consider the size and budgets of those cities in comparison to ours. Nothing presented in the budget offers that comparison and therefore does not justify a separate salary hike. Finally, I have something on a very personal note that I'm sure none of you up there is going to want to hear, but I have to say this. I would like to tell everyone on our council and everyone in this room tonight, from the bottom of my heart, how truly disappointed and disgusted I am in the hateful rhetoric being put on Nextdoor website by our city council member, Frank Paul. Mr. Paul is definitely free to...
Ms. Peña, your time's up, please.
I think I need to finish.
Maybe you do, but your time's up.
Well...
I'm asking you to sit down.
All right, but it's in poor taste, and you felt...
I'm asking you to sit down, Ms. Peña, your time's up.
I'll sit down, but you're guilty too.
Ms. Peña, one more time. You can say it during the thing.
Leslie Winger, 137 Lou John Circle. Actually, I'm just going to address one issue, and that is the cutting up of this room, which has been proposed by the City Manager. I would like to bring up a piece of history again, as I did last time, but of course, nobody got to hear about it. What? Can you hear me? Okay, thank you, Brett Douglas, I appreciate that. When we moved into this building, we had spent weeks and brought 1,000 citizens through this building to get their opinion on what they wanted to have done with this building, because this building belongs to the citizens of Castle Hills, doesn't belong to the employees, it doesn't belong to the city council, it belongs to all the citizens. And what they said was that they wanted this room to remain intact, they wanted to have a large room, as long as we bought this church, which nobody was particularly interested in, they at least wanted to keep this room. That is why the room has been in the position that it's in. So I would really strongly urge you to start that again if you don't think the same people are here, and start having tours and get an opinion of the people who live here. I echo what Ms. Peña said, you have to start listening to the citizens. Nobody has taken anything into consideration about what the people here want. Patty McCord addressed the drainage issues, but of course, any of you who have walked around, and Tim, I know you have, you know that what people here want are the streets repaired. Yes, we have done a certain number of streets...
Twenty-eight, to be exact.
Well, 28 streets, but again, I don't really know what that means because the streets that have been...
I'll be glad to sit down and talk to you anytime.
I know you will, I know you will. But, and you need to really kind of lay it out on the website, because the streets that have been repaired are not always a complete street, sometimes it's one block. So, we need to start looking at how many streets have not been repaired, and a lot of money is being taken out of that budget to use for more employees. Again, the city is not growing, and we don't need to have more employees, we need for people to do the jobs that they were hired to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Mr. Paul, did you have any comments now, or did you want to?
If there's misinformation out there, I will continue to respond to it, only to bring forth accurate information. If that's hateful, I'm sorry. I don't intend it to be hateful, it's a shame people take it that way. I'd like to address a couple of other things. First thing I want to say is, I haven't seen a plan. This is all about plans. It seems like every citizen out here knows more about it than I do. I haven't seen anybody say that Persimmon, you know, I know one of our citizens took the information from a budget meeting, "Oh, I heard Persimmon," and goes out and starts stirring up stuff. We haven't made any decision on anything. I have not seen a plan, so I don't know what. I think the idea of these impound lots are good. Now, what does that mean? I don't know. But again, y'all know more than we do, I guess, because y'all must have seen plans. So, as far as employees, I agree with Mr. Fintris, but that we need to be able to take care of our people, and we need to be permanent. Then we got other people to say, "You got too many employees, you don't need any more employees." So, it's kind of a mixed bag there, it depends on who you're looking to or who you're listening to at the moment. The other thing is, you're absolutely correct, we all want streets and drainage taken care of. Like Tim says, we've done 26, 28 streets, we get into the drainage, that's a bigger issue. People are... People are just trying to come up with ideas. I looked over this list of signatures, and I appreciate the fact. I appreciate the fact that that... If people remember Exploration Station, we didn't prove that, but it was all over that we were going to do that, and everybody comes up here en masse, "We're going to do that." We didn't do Exploration Station. It didn't fit. I mean, come on, give us a little sense up here, a little common sense. We work hard at this. And in answer to another question, yeah, I work around, and I talk to a lot of people. There are just some people that, I'm sorry, I missed. Streets and drainage, and I looked over this list of people who signed a petition. I think that's great. I don't have a problem with that. But there's not one place, there's not one signature that says, "Oh, here's an idea that maybe we can help the city make revenue." We're open. Everybody can come see us. You can come talk to us. Give us some ideas. We want to do it. We're not up here trying to dictate what goes on. And like I said, I haven't even seen a plan on this other thing. But yes, we need drainage. There's no question about it. And then there was a comment made that, I think that I said that we needed to have this assistant, we needed to have this, whatever. I have no idea what the lady's talking about, none whatsoever. I've never made that comment. I was at that meeting. She may have been watching it on video, but I've never made that comment. I have not made a decision on these things, but I certainly appreciate the presumption of the people, the few people out here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory, do you have any comments?
Mayor, could I say something? This is a public, we're in a public hearing right now to hear from the public. There's nothing on the agenda for you all to have discourse and discussion and rebuttals and arguments and all that.
Thank you.
If you follow the agenda, stick with it. We're in a public hearing. We're listening to the public. When they're finished, then you go on to the next item, and then this meeting will be over.
Then can we, can we also then, when we have that type of engagement, can we cut the citizen off then? Because, like you said, that's not why we're here.
For, no. They have, the mayor gave them five minutes to speak. They can speak on whatever they want for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Gregory, did you have any comments or anything towards the proposed budget of 2018?
I'm, to take a line of Mr. Paul, I'm confused here. Mr. Brennan, are we supposed to be discussing the budget, or are we just supposed to be discussing-
No, sir. This is a public hearing to hear from the public. When the public hearing is finished, then the mayor needs to move on to the next item on the agenda, and then y'all need to adjourn.
Well, I guess I'm confused, too. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak about the agenda, please? I don't have anybody else signed up. Mr. Baker, go ahead.
Evening, Quentin Baker, 304 Foxall. Point of clarification from our, our City Manager. The budget was put up with a $100,000 surplus, but then there were serious proposals put up after that. I'm unclear as to whether those proposal line items are additional items that would draw down the budget, or they're already included in the budget.
They're included in the budget. Now, Quentin, just to make sure we're, we're square, the revenue generating ones, which is the impound lot and the passport acceptance, they could be pulled out, and there would be no impact, because what I did was I included enough revenue to cover their operating expenses in the budget. So, they're, they're, it's like a cash-neutral proposition. You can pull them out now, it's not going to make any difference. But with regards to the, to the Assistant Public Works Director slash Project Manager, that salary is factored into the budget. What hasn't been pulled out of the budget is the $91,000 that we've spent this year. So, you know, it could be 100, it could be whatever the project management fees we pay in a year's time would be realized back to the city. So, it's, it actually paints a more grim picture than, than it actually is. You'll actually get some cost savings back for having that position in staff. So, in some regards, it's revenue generating as well, or it's a revenue offset.
Got it. On the, on the salaries, the added employees, you brought up line items for the salaries. As oaths, do you have fully burdened salaries, meaning the added cost of insurance, fringe, overhead? What's the burden that's added on top of those salaries as it comes to the city?
It's, I don't have that number off the top of my head. What I showed you was the pure salary and the pure TMRS numbers. I can, I can pull that data for you, but it's, you know, you can add another, you know, it's, it's got FICA, Medicare, insurance, all that, and it's tabulated and is included in the overall cost. I didn't just, I just didn't split it out separately.
But it, but it is embedded in the-
It's embedded. It's all included in the numbers, yeah. It's all calculated.
Typically, that's at least 100% more than the salary. I mean, it's-
I don't think it's quite 100%, but it's, yeah.
It's on that order.
It's 50, somewhere in there and above. So, yeah, I can get that to you.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Maggie, I'm going to fill you in here, okay, just so we'll have a record. Thank you.
My name is Maggie Dominguez, and I reside at 300 Kaladium, which is the property back to back with the Persimmon address that has been looked at for this impound lot. And I must say here that I'm a little confused now, because there was a comment made that the, the proposal was not for necessarily Persimmon, but that it was for another, possibly another location, and that the document that was sent out in the neighborhood listed the Persimmon address. My husband and I were notified by a councilperson and by the City Manager that it was the Persimmon address. So, you can understand my confusion now. So, I really would like clarification, not only for my husband and I, but clarification for all of those people that worked so hard to get this petition signed. And you know the reasons that we're against it, obviously, and a lot of the same concerns that we have, a lot of the citizens of Castle Hills have also. So, I would like to have that clarified before the meeting is over.
Mr. Brennan, can I answer that question, please? I'll take that.
As long as you give a short factual response.
The short factual response is, we brought this up in a meeting at the, one of the budget hearings. The impound lot was talked about, and I brought the subject up myself, because I did task these people to come up with ways to get income. So, what it, so, the first thing that came up was Persimmon, but there were actually several different locations that came up. Now, I can't for the life of me figure out who spread that around. But whoever did is, it was reckless. It was something that I don't appreciate, because it caused 100 people to get out there and sign a petition about a lot that I don't even see anything about denying an impound lot. All I see is Persimmon Avenue, which was not even a, one, it was one of many that were discussed. So, that's where that came from, Maggie. So, I would go back to the person who first came to you, and I would ask them why they did that. I think that maybe Maggie should tell us. She's the one that brought it up.
Well, one of the people that spoke to my husband about it was our City Manager, a person that I-
No one else?
Have a lot of respect for, and Douglas.
No one else?
We did receive a call from another person, but it was entirely long after these other two calls had come to our attention. And, and really, we made the decision to start the petition, because it was our understanding that 104 Persimmon, or whatever the address is, was the only lot considered for that purpose.
So, you called the City Manager just to find out something about a lot that was brought up in a-
No, Mayor, can I, can I tie in here? So, I was, I was, we were discussing the possibility of an, of an impound lot, and I know Mr. Dominguez, I have a good relationship with him from the Streets and Drainage Committee, and I was coming back from checking the, I think I was out on West Castle, looking at the gravel work that had been done.
Forget it.
Anyway, but I bumped into Mr. Dominguez, and I said, "Hey, one of the things that's being passed around is the possibility of an impound lot, and this is one of the locations that we're talking about." And we talked about it, because the other activity that goes on there is, it gets used for a construction laydown area, which is not a nice area to look at either. So, we talked about whether or not, you know, what, what he would, what he would rather see out his back window, and we had that conversation. And again, I think we parted with a little bit of a misunderstanding. Again, I'll take, I'll take responsibility for that, because I thought that Mr. Dominguez was more in favor of having the impound lot and a masonry wall versus a, a construction laydown area. But then I spoke later to Ms. Dominguez, and we visited with you guys today, and I understand exactly, I think, where they stand now, and we, and we cleared the air. I would also like to point out that at the last council meeting, when this came up as a topic of discussion, that the mayor did tell us, "Hey, we got, we need to go out and look at other locations, maybe even outside the city of Castle Hills, but nearby, but we can, we can maybe purchase some property and use it." So, it was never 100% prospect. It was just one of several prospects that was raised, and, and I had the conversation again with Mr. Dominguez. And so, I muddied the water a little bit. I apologize for my role in it, but I think we're clear now on what you feel about it.
Well, I still would like to have a clarification. Is the lot on Persimmon off the selection list?
I can't answer. Since, since we've been instructed tonight that council can't respond, I can't say that, because I don't know, because I don't vote. I would suggest to them that they don't. But that's my suggestion as a resident of this city, that they don't do that. In fact, I would think that, I would hope they would leave it in the budget, and then sometime in, in the future, decide on where they're going to put it, and strongly suggest, from my opinion, that it shouldn't go there.
Well, as a resident who's been more than one time inconvenienced by the lot being used for other purposes, that really are not conducive to a neighborhood lot, you're asking the citizens to tell you how to budget out or how to find more money for the city. My first inclination, when you talked to us today, was make a playground out of it. Make it friendly for the city. I believe that was the first thing I said. The second thing is, sell the lot. You could bring in money for that. And in this way, you would not be affecting the lives of so many citizens in this corridor of the city. We love the city. We want you to do right by its citizens, and I thank you for listening to what I had to say.
Thank you, Maggie. Just so you know, there's been a conversation on that lot between myself and Ms. Winger even came up with the idea regarding the moving off campus in order to do it, which I was 100% in favor of. Unfortunately, I don't have the ability to vote. So, I would strongly suggest, and I'll say it again, that when this, when this path of revenue comes up, that you take the residents into consideration and residential areas of where we put this thing. Okay. With that said, I guess that we're going to move on to the second item of business, which has announced the date for the final vote on the 2018 budget and the 2017 tax rate in the Crime Control Prevention District, CCPD. The governing body will consider a vote on the Castle Hills fiscal year 2018 budget and 2017 tax rate, and the proposed date is September the 12th, 2017. The Crime Control Prevention District, CCPD, 2018 budget at a special city council meeting on September the 26th. Is that correct? Chief? You're going to hold it back for two weeks?
We're going to have a public hearing. We're going to have a vote for adoption of the budget on the 26th.
Okay. Okay. So, the, it looks like council that the, this is just an announcement. It is not a action item. So, the budget will be heard, and the tax rate will be heard and decided on September 12th, and the Crime Control District and budget will be a city, special city council meeting on September the 26th. Since there's no other thing on the agenda to talk about, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you. 29th September.
Did we ever close the public hearing?
Okay. The public hearing is now officially closed at 8:09.